They please have a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Your second.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have anyone signed in to speak this evening in person or online? Great. Student representative reports. Let's start with Yoshi.
So for ASB, Hoco Week went pretty well for ASB on leadership. Class of 2025 won Hoco for the second year in a row and we won by thirty-eight points. Planning for Pink Week starts next week. And for band, we have plans for the field show on the twenty-fifth all planned out. For miscellaneous, I was gonna ask if there's anything we can do to fix the water pressure in the ba- in the bathroom sinks. Been hearing like a couple things about that. And then have any advancements been made in letting kids walk up the bomb stairs instead of walking up the hill? So it's more of a question, not like an item.
Thank you.
So we can discuss the access we at our safety meeting that we have at five o'clock each night. Progress is being made. The rules inside the technology system is going on where our hope is to have them ready after Thanksgiving. So we are making progress.
That's good.
I didn't know anything about the water. I looked out to Andy. We're gonna have to do a little research as to what has the water pressure always been that way or has it gotten worse?
There's, yeah, I mean, the it's been like this since I was a freshman. It's just I recently, I don't, I don't know if that was me or not, okay? It's just I recently heard a couple things about it from other people. So I was like, oh, if it's not just affecting me, then maybe I should talk about it. It's just like very hard and you kind of have to like.
Like showers.
Yeah. Yeah.
Too much.
Yeah. Too much, but that was it. At the new high school.
Specifically, one place I know that has like too much pressure in its water is the bathroom backstage and like the auditorium and the band room. That bathroom has too much pressure in it. So people usually go out to the sink in the open area to wash their hands instead of using the one inside the bathroom.
Too much pressure is not usually the problem. Down.
Thank you, Yoshi. Cam, you have a report.
Yeah, covering athletics, football won last Friday against Quincy. Their next game is this Friday in Royal. Vival won yesterday, taking all three sets against East Valley. Their next game is tomorrow, October tenth at home. Girl soccer won yesterday against Quincy, taking a win three-zero. Their next game is tomorrow. It's also their senior night. Swim has their senior night Saturday, October twelfth.
You, Cam, Alexander.
Continuing on with my, well, not continuing, pursuing the problem that the soon had about the food portions. Today, I was able to talk with Darlene Morrow about the schools' like policies and like requirements on it. I have learned a lot about it. And we also talked about potentially trying to start a thing at like, start like something during January where students could pay to get like a second lunch or breakfast if they have funds in their account to get a second meal if they feel like they need more. And as well as starting a student advisory food group that would like survey the students constantly and ask like their opinions on the meals that the school gives them. See like if a stu- if the students really like a certain meal, if they didn't like a certain meal. And if they feel like something needs change or nothing or something.
Thank you, Alexander. Discussion items. Number one is the C W A P T E S D one oh five and one twenty-three Spooktacular Fall Workshop. Know who's speaking regarding?
I'm gonna, I'm kinda got deer in the headlights going on.
Okay.
So let me, there is a fascinating flyer like this. Very effective.
Anybody online know anything about the Spooktacular Fest? Oh gosh, I, I owe, I mean, apology.
I didn't know.
I didn't know it was called Spooktacular. I have some information. Here's what I would like to say to the board. Here's her little email. Chris Whedon from E S D one oh five is giving a presentation, what to do when a crisis happens on your bus. There will be a driver presentation, a hot topics roundtable, and Kevin Chase will do a closing. It's kind of a pep pep talk to motivate drivers to work through the changes and stress and know how important they are. Now I feel silly and I'm sorry, Ami, if you're listening. You prepped me for this and everything and I didn't realize it was called Spooktacular. So this is an opportunity for us to feature and host both E S D's one oh five and one twenty-three. And it's a really good piece, like when I did the board meeting or different things like that, to allow guests to come and see what's going on in our programs. And so they're coming here to see us. So once again, I apologize. It's from seven thirty to two on October twenty-sixth at PHS.
Well, great. School building report. Mr. Gilman regarding West Rand Elementary School.
All right, we'll, we had our ice cream party yesterday. We received that from the PTO because Witstrand won the coin wars. Was a fundraiser for the PTO. September, or I mean, October twenty-third, we have Science on Wheels coming from the Pacific Science Center. That's also sponsored by the PTO. Lie- we have Lion King Performance coming up partnering with the Princess Theater. That's on November eighth at seven-thirty and ninth at two-thirty. And we'll have a flyer that goes out. The tickets don't go on sale until Friday. So can't access it right now, but they'll go on sale on Friday. We partnered with E S D one twenty-three with bicycle trailer. So our kids are upper third, fourth, and fifth graders are learning how to ride bicycle and then bike safety. And the big thing that we're working on right now is the O S S I grant process with the SIP plan. There's different requirements for that federal money that we qualify for. School Improvement Plan, sorry.
Sorry, thank you.
That's all right now.
Any questions for Mr. Gilman? Thank you.
Thank you.
Department reports. Maintenance Department, Andy Howe.
Hey, could you pull your microphone just a little closer to you so those online can hear you?
Think we're gonna switch out your batteries on that mic.
Or the nets probably won't be in till next spring, I'm guessing. Next thing on the list would be the trees here at the old high school along this the walk over here. We got those dug and planted last week. I'm gonna skip that one. We've got the painters working here at the old high school. They're starting on the gym. They're gonna go all the way around over the course of the next week and a half to two weeks. The parking lots at this parking lot right here, the parking lot at Housel and the bus loop. And the old, the stadium parking lot, the lower parking lot, we're looking to getting them all striped, seal coated and striped. Hopefully before snow flies, we have about another month of striping weather. And if they can get it squeezed in, we'll try to get those done yet this year. So I have one here. When, when you, when you made the comment about the, the restrooms, I thought maybe you were talking about here. We went through and had the restrooms painted here, had new stall stuff put up prior to the first board meeting. If anybody'd been in there two months ago, they were just atrocious. So they were painted, new stalls put up. And the last thing on my list is the Witstrand fire system, which we fought most of the summer. And we, it's all done. The line's flushed, the fire system's in. We passed with the, the fire marshal. Tanks cleaned. It's a done deal. We had to end up pulling the, the pump and the well ca- not casing, but the well line, because it was like fifteen, eighteen years old and it was getting rust in the system and the fire marshal wouldn't pass it. So it's all new at this point with plastic pipe. And then everything holds pressure and works correctly. Any questions? Yep. So what, what we're doing out front is right in front of the gym at one point or the, the gym entrance, there was a tree. And so the tree died, was chopped down. Well, there was just a big hole left. And so we filled it in with dirt when I first started, just so nobody trip, trip on it. But it was real broke up and, and, and a tripping hazard anyway. So that's all getting pulled out. The, there was a small red brick wall. I'm not sure why it was there, but it was kind of in the middle of everything. That's now gone. And then there was a, a bench that had some, some cement. Those are all chopped off and gone. And then they're gonna pour all that back. And then right in front of the science wing door, that was, there was some spots where it sank, you know, and there was, I don't know, two, three inches at least between panels. So those are coming out. They got saw cut, pulled out, and they're gonna level everything out, bed it back with rock. Those will probably, in fact, I think the truck's scheduled for tomorrow at like noon. So they'll be poured and then probably the form boards will come off Friday and they'll be good to go. And then they're doing all the little cuts too, which at the moment we have plywood on them. So nobody falls in the hole there. They're all prepared and boxed up, so.
I, I have some questions about the football field.
Yes.
There's a lot of talk in the community that I'm hearing. And I, I think I've said to other people, by the time people are talking to me about football, I'm always happy to talk about everything about the district. That means that's a big issue. I get questions about band mostly more than I do about football, but the stadium doesn't look great.
No.
And I hear a lot about it. There's way too much information in our community regarding agriculture and watering. And there are so many people that want to help. So I would like to figure out a way that we can get a solution together and a team together. We've got, I, I think there's a safety issue at this time regarding rocks on the field. Sharp rocks, you know, my concern is our viability and exposure. If we have a player go down on a knee on a pile of rock, a soccer player, a goalie slipper and his face gets sliced open. That's, I mean, I'm just just surprised that that's the condition it's in between the thirty and thirty yard line. I mean, it's fifty fifty on whether it's more brown than green. So what's the plan regarding art fiker, the middle school field, which is also, I think, in rough shape, not soft? And watering and kind of like year round, not just, okay, well, school's gonna start, we're gonna start watering this a little bit and hope it's gonna work out. I mean, is there a, is there a ground team that just works on the stadium and the practice fields? And what plan can be put in place? Because we want a solution. We don't want to come and say and just issue complaints and tell you it looks like a rodeo arena without.
No, no. And, and you know, ultimately, it, it, it ends up on me. So last year, everybody said it was too thick and too whatever. We've had some, you know, the old unfortunate series of events, leaks and breaks and the, most of the brown you're seeing is where we patched back. There was a lot of leaks and we had a, one of the mowers drove through it and left great big ruts. So you can't have ruts. So we put dirt. The dirt wasn't as clean as I liked. And ultimately, I didn't go back and, and check the work. It should have been raked out better and was. It's since been redone. But it is what it is at this point. And the middle school fields actually looks better now than I think it ever has, which is not seeing much. But it, it, we, we've had a, a number of fields that have not looked great for a number of years that are coming along well. It's just bad luck or neither.
And I, I would like the community and those who are listening tonight to also understand that part of our capital levy monies and so forth is we're putting, the first thing that's going underground is the middle school football field. That will go be underground and ready for spring so that we can get it ready for spring irrigation, excuse me. And then we have the hardness of it. So that means aeration, aeration. That means some people use gypsum, some different types of things to soften that surface. I did get some numbers from some community members who want to, that I'm gonna reach out to. I did not reach out to them today, but I did get some numbers about who, you know, people who even are willing to mow or, or do some things. So I think the piece that Andy and I are moving forward is like, what can we do within our own wheelhouse? And then when do we have to say we need some help? And I think that's where Andy and I are at now. I have speak, spoken with President Reiner before about this and this and Director Wyman and so forth. And we have some pieces that we have to do, but it really starts in the strangest way when football and soccer are done in the fall and what we treat with it now, what we treat for those of you in agriculture, what we do in February, the minute the snow is off and what we do and how we fertilize and then. I, and then using sand versus dirt, using different things like they use in golf courses. So it's, it's a big project. But to those who have listened and who have reached out, you're on my list to call and we love that you're reaching out. And I like the people who are solution minded. So I'll, we will be contacting those people in partnership.
And there's, there's a couple other things that play in, you know, with, with having the, the field, the north area over here down for tennis and, and the sod. You know, P E's been out on it where normally the only thing that's out on the stadium, you know, is, is football for, for Friday nights.
Soccer and soccer.
Soccer, yeah. But I mean, it's not, it's not generally during the day. The Housel Field, the high school's practicing there. So normally all it sees is eighth graders for an hour and a half a night. Now it's seeing, you know, so it is what it is. Once we get the other fields back, that'll ease things up on it as well.
And one, just to follow up and I'll let you off the hot seat. Someone also mentioned calcium deposits on the new track because the sprinklers are hitting it.
I haven't really seen anything, but we do have some that need. In fact, even this afternoon, I was, I shut one of the sets off myself because it was half spun onto the trap. So I know we also have, in fact, this didn't come up at all, but on the, the west end of the track where the high jump and, and all that stuff is, we've had problems in the past because that was not, there's some real like, like fifteen foot wide strips of grass and it has the great big rotators on it that shoot like sixty feet. Well, yeah, it gets so far in each direction, but it also goes over the top of the high jump bags and, and stuff like that. So it's, well, for lack of a better term, it's ruining. It's, it's, it's aging much faster than it needs to. So we've talked about getting some new ones and tarps or changing out all the sprinklers, you know, having it redesigned so it's more friendly for the.
Raining away from the trap versus into.
There are different things like that. So, but yeah, there, I mean, it's, it's a, you know, how to get, how to eat an elephant. It's
A bite at a time.
A little bit at a time, so.
Well, thanks, Andy.
No, thank you.
Anybody else? Neighborhood school.
So Deanna and I are gonna tang team this. Blake, do you have this PowerPoint? Okay. So you, for those board members, you also have it in a PowerPoint like this or people sitting at the table. So sometimes if it is difficult to see, we wanted you to have it like this as we're adjusting to the new cameras here. For everybody listening tonight or those who may listen to this after the fact, Deanna and I have prepared this to talk about neighborhood schools. And we really wanna talk about what is a neighborhood school? What impact may it have in our community? And so forth. And so we're here and notice it's a discussion item, everyone. This is not an action item. This is a discussion item. And so we just wanna move forward with that and, and have a good discussion. So Deanna, if you want to turn your microphone on, we'll kind of talk through it together.
I could just say that from a historical perspective, we've talked about neighborhood schools for twenty-five years.
So if we could go to the next slide, it's called what is a neighborhood school? One of the first things I want you to notice is that this logo, if you see anything in publication that has this TK five neighborhood schools logo on it, you know that any publication or anything that we're gonna use this logo. So if you see a poster about it, or if you see anything, we wanna know, this is our little logo we're gonna use. So if you see it on a flyer or in the community, that's what we're gonna be using. So we wanna talk about what is a neighborhood school? And it's kind of coincidental, was not planned this way. Mr. Gilman is here and he is a principal of a neighborhood school. A neighborhood school is where a community, a section of our district, everybody in that community would go to that school for transitional kindergarten through fifth grade. This is a, depending on where you grew up, this may be what you remembered growing up. If you grew up in Prosser, that's not the case. But if mo- a lot of elementaries, I hate to use the word most, but I think a large percentage of, of elementary schools are K five. Now we have transitional kindergarten. And so there's some reasons of potentially why we'd go to a neighborhood school. So I also included in your packet in the flyer, alternative grade configurations. It's a, a a publication. It's got posted also on the website. We're gonna have a neighborhood schools tab if you wanna look into things. Some of the big pieces that we want to go over with you is, I think about transition. And to my students on the board, you think about the transition you had when you went from fifth grade to Housel. And you went from eighth grade to the high school. Alexander's going, not me. Yeah, yeah. So that might be something. So we're also knowing that transition years are, are difficult on students. Our data has shown that from our third grade students have consistently been below other students in the state in their third grade data. Now, while we're not saying it's the only reason, it may be a contributing factor. You're going from second grade in a building that you've been in and now you go to a new school. And even if you're in third grade and you're eight, turning nine or, you know, kind of in that eight-year-old, that's a big transition. Those are new people, new faces, new lunchroom, new things. And those, all of those adjustments take time.
Well, the relationship building and the knowing kids from when they move from grade to grade, you, you, you get to know those kindergartners and then they're going on to first grade. And then those teachers get to know them and then can even go back to those kindergarten teachers for some feedback and ideas. And then same thing, second, well, by the time they leave second grade and they're leaving that building or the third grade, it's like starting over. So there is a regression academically, probably some regression socially and emotionally because they just don't, they're not gonna walk the school level of comfort of being in a school that they've been in. So there's, there's, you know, there's information and, and research out there about those transitions. And a lot of times districts, like if they're growing, and this was probably years ago, they had the Keen River View School or the River View School. And they added a, an, an elementary and they added heights. And they're like, okay, well, we just need to make room in this one. So we'll send the third through fifth graders to another building. Sunny Side did a similar thing. All of their schools were seen the same. So they built a kindergarten school, sent all the kindergartners to one school. And then once that's done, it's added another transition into those kids' lives. For them, it solved one problem, but it does create other others. So sometimes it's just not realizing, thinking about all those impacts and probably, I don't know, it was probably fifty, sixty, seventy years ago that's happened. I think Heights was built in the fifties. It, that's probably when it happened. And at that time, it really wasn't something people were considering.
So the next slide talks about, why is this coming up for discussion, discussion? And someone, we've already talked about academic success, parental involvement, learning outcomes and school transitions. And I'm gonna talk about parent involvement since we happen to be on conferences. We have some families now that make, have student in Keen River View, a student in Heights, a student, right? Where if you had one less school to attend, you and your relationship, the ansignment relationship with students to, to staff. But what about the parental relationship? You have your student in one building and you've built a relationship with Principal X and those teachers and you know where to go and you feel comfortable. And then all of a sudden, they go to third grade, especially if it's your first child. And now you have a new principal to learn and a new staff and a new pick up and drop off location and all of the things that may happen. And so we're trying to potentially, our hope is to potentially solve some of that transition.
Heard for years, many years too, about the community sense that Kevin's building has and have that K five. But they, they, they really know those parents and they really get to know those kids. And everybody knows everybody. And when, when they're, when they're not there as long and you can't build that relationship, this, you do see the parents that came in, they had before, but the kids are moving on so quickly. And then in our own district data, the kids might leave second grade and we know because of the summer break, there is some summer slides that dip in the student's course. But there's a more significant dip between third, second, third and significant sixth.
And we can also, when we disaggregate the data, we see a difference in our second and third grade data between our K R V and, and Height students versus our Witstrand students. And so, and that is for all populations. That's all segments of our student population. And so this is up for discussion. This is things that we're bringing forward. This is not a decision being made. This is up for discussion. And we'd like to move forward. And I'm gonna open it up for questions for you. So I'm gonna kind of do our little piece and then like to hear from you. I want, the next slide talks about next steps, staff, family and community input. We're gonna have three community meetings, one in November, December and January. And they are input. I want everybody to hear it. It's not a question and answer. Yes, it would be like that, but it'll be an input. We'd like your thoughts on this. What are some pros? What are some cons? Or parents do great things or community members do things where, did you think about? Have you considered? So we wanna make sure that. The, the lines were drawn for our, our, our building attendance for Witstrand. I don't even know. Long before I was here. And so right now, we are bussing a busload of kids to Witstrand that actually live in town. Because the way our lines are drawn, there's not enough kids in the attendance area of Witstrand. So we're always forcing kids out to Witstrand and then we get into this cycle of, well, do they, they wanna be back in town?
So we're always forcing kids out to Witstrand and then we get into the cycle of, well, do they wanna be back in town? Moving him in, moving him out. It creates other challenges. And we really need to look at our district as a whole and look at our populations, where that population is located. And r- adjust that so that kids belong to a school. It's not a matter of, well, I'm gonna be here for a while, then I'm gonna go back to River View or I'm gonna go back to Heights. Um, because we we should have lines that are drawn so that it might not be perfect. But it's gonna be pretty darn close to get our student population in a i- where we're not. Lining sixty kids up at the high school to put them on a bus to run them out to Witstrand for transition. Yeah.
Um, I know, Kevin, you weren't part of this. If you think of anything as as they're good asking questions, we just encourage you to include your any thoughts you may have.
Because you've worked in both types of buildings too, uh, been a part of both systems.
We're opening up to student and board reps. Any questions you might have? We'd love to open it up for the dialogue for those who are listening tonight as well.
So would there be like a whole different school boat that we, okay, that's what is, no, I mean, all right.
In it, in a simple term, in a simple terms, there are six. It it's not exactly six, but bear with me. It, there's six first grade classes and there's six fifth grade classes. So we'd have three at of those six at K R V and three of those six at Heights.
So we would obviously, we would have to make some adjustments because obviously kindergarten furniture and toilets are this big. And then we have more adult sized furniture by the time you get to fifth grade. So there's some changes. There's there's. There's pieces that have to do with the facility. They have to do with where our kids are located. They have to do with our staff. There's a lot of work. So.
I'm gonna add to that, especially as you mentioned it and I did not mention it in my presentation is um. So when Heights was built, and as I say that it's here and we went and looked, there are. More areas in classrooms that are already plumbed. Or toilets and sinks. So if a kindergarten has a restroom at K R V. That kindergarten class at Heights would have a restroom. Does that make sense?
Maybe no, our high school board reps never experienced bathroom in your kindergarten classroom, but that's how they're built now. There's a bathroom for kindergartners in their room. So that they're not being sent out into a hallway or, you know, or like they're accident at the bathroom. So they're, it's already set up for that.
So to clarify, we're talking about is the three existing elementary schools and what you teach become.
It's not, Witstrand can't take more classes. It's not like we can take some kids, teachers out of here. They don't have rooms.
Like someone who sent their kids to Witstrand, I can tell you the sense of community in that school is really, really strong. We might be everything about having my kid in that school. I can't imagine as a mom, like, be taking my young child and switching their school every three years. Moving my second grader into a brand new school outfit. It's just to finally learn. The names, the faces of everyone in their facility. So I personally just think it's a really wonderful idea.
I I have everything Michelle said and then add on to it as a parent's schedule. So. It's going TK even, so seven years of, seven years of building TK. You have, you know, one lunch calendar, one conference place, one drop off, one kickoff, one set of spirit, we just. Everything as opposed to, okay. River View to Height, you find it in, you know, wherever. Letting that transition, I think especially for kids. That um, issues with transitions and learning, they're learning in a buzz crowd, learning your principal and. It is kind of, you know, you're going to third grade and you'll foster this, you're kind of like getting into. Like you're a kindergartner, you gotta learn a whole new system. And I am excited about that. I'm really glad that.
That's our dream.
And financially, if there are a lot of calls or are we able to take stuff from? Like furniture, toilets from River View, we move um.
Furniture, furniture is totally movable. There will be the, after we get the. That we'll move forward, let's just say. We would make a decision as a team. You as the leader and me as following your guidance. Is it financially wise to take out about toilet in a sink and move it to Heights? Or is it better long term for the whole system to just put? And I don't mean just, so Andy, please, oh, he's still, please don't freak out, but I don't mean just, but putting a new toilet in a sink. Sometimes putting something in new is less expensive than the labor it takes to take out the old one. Seal up the hole, do the thing, convert it back. So it may be that we decide we're gonna do. Six factors, three in kindergarten, three in first grade at Heights and move forward. Does that make sense? We may not do them all or whatever, but.
Definitely would have to buy the clothes and sinks for Heights because they don't, we don't have them. And taking them from somewhere just means there's somewhere else. So we'd have to do that. There would be some moving costs. We do have um, they're in our teacher's contract when we, when we make them move rooms. There's a cost to that. Because they get paid some days a per day for moving, because moving a teacher's classroom is a packing it and unpacking is a lot of work if any of you ever. Especially help. Teacher unpack all of their fun and cute stuff that they have. Um, so there's definitely some costs associated with it. Um, but it's one of those things that down the road is gonna have dividends.
Blake, could we ask, was there any comments or sort of discussions in the way we have it set up here? I can't see. Is there anything in the chat? Okay.
So Witstrand, essentially, other than um, kind of seeing enough boundary line for Witstrand. Doesn't change a whole lot. Um, so when you're talking about the schools in town like. How or who? That the the process of, I guess, making these new boundary lines in in town.
Also, I'm glad you asked that. So there's a few things that we can use as tools. Um, our transportation has a program called SaaS Boss. And that tells us approximately the location and the number of students that need to stop. Um, there's census tools that we can use. There's a city has some demographic data, right? Um, we do want to assure you that if we say. My, please don't say, I'm interested in using the name of a, but I don't think it's a big cause or, so if we say Smith Street. Um, if we say Smith Street is a boundary, we want to assure you that anyone on Smith Street. Right, these doorless, those are south side street, go to a school. I don't want you to think that. Students on Smith Street on the north side can go to one school and the south side will go to the other school so that they lose their friends and their folks. So. We would have boundaries, but we would have some pretty clear expectations, or not expectations, some clear. Explanation as to why those boundaries are. They are. In a perfect world, you know, you could go right down some main street, say on this side, but it doesn't always work that way because. We have contacts that have one higher numbers, we have public developments that have different numbers and different demographics. So we would have, it may look like one is a greater geographical area, but may have less numbers.
I I, I'm sorry, I came from the existing system, so it's kinda. A little hard to wrap here, never on the different moment, but not. Just because of the conversations we've had, you know, last year coming into this career about. That target demographic of sending the kids to middle school before. So I mean, I. You know, we are that, you came through, arrived. Um, getting a better product by the time they hit that considering. Here, I'm just curious, how far in, as far as come back from. Admins, school principals, have you guys?
Because this is a special item. Um, we feel that our community and board and everything should. In the strangest way, hear about it about the same time. We didn't feel it was prepared to the community indoor view to be having these. Other side conversations with. Um, whoever built it, started discussion when this already has the answer, right? And so this really is the first public comment and first step. Now we are going to have topics. We'll have to. Means we'll have to, oh. Principals, those kinds of things. Everybody's gonna have a say in that as a board. Um, and we advise, we will make the decision as a board or as a school district. Um, and then we will work through which going is what we hope to be able to come back and be ready to make an action. That we can have a pretty decent set of that as it says, this is what we heard, this is what we done, here's how we're gonna handle the toilets. Because how we're gonna handle, you know, teacher placement.
I think the thing that we just have to keep in front of our minds, there will be some challenges because. You would kind of treat raising kids, it would be the kids that would be going in the fourth and fifth grade. Remember, there will be some of those that have to put a whole team in the end.
Yeah, my first thought was, it's not the quality of education and that's obviously. What we're, we want to do. Um, my second thought too was. It's kind of a consolidation effect. Well, financially, there's efficiency, why is that? That we can quantify at this point in terms of this, starting the discussion, you see.
Only. One fine thing I could say that at this point that it potentially is, is in transportation. So right now, a bus has students from all buildings on the bus. So in the future, we have a neighborhood of us that would. Your neighborhood elementary students. And I don't, don't, don't mean on the order they would drop me, right? But elementary students would all be dropped at one location and then they would drop to middle school and then they would drop to high school or vice versa. It's kind of a shuffle that called the shuttle, the quick turn shuttle. So. And so I think the. One of the good thing I could tell you, I'm gonna say this a less route, but less complicated routes and stops in transition.
Talk about the shuttle. So we have TK kids that are, some of them are shuttle busters. So you can imagine. Their parents ask to take them to the high school in the morning. They leave them, you know, stay there. But we do have people that are supervised, plus this is, you know, a TK kid. And they have to get on that bus and they have to come to school. And in the afternoon, they take a shuttle bus and then they go to K R V. And again, we have people there that are helping get them onto the right buses. They have to get off that bus and then go find their route to go to home. That's a lot for a little kid. Um, so so. When Kim came on, that was one thing that she addressed right away last year was getting. Some staff members that were willing to work a little bit extra time to make sure that those kids were getting on the right buses. My board for that was on the school was trying to figure that out. It is a little bit better, but it is. One, it's a long time on the bus because it's full of kids and then even parents. I'm gonna go here to drop off them, or here to pick us, just to get them to the school.
And you can see how they pick kids up. I mean, most families have more than a semester there, you know, maybe three or four years or. So that I can see that.
We have a lot of families that do drop their kids off at school or their kids get up. And if you have kids multiple buildings, you're going from you. I have it as well. I like, it's a kind of a ball. It would definitely come out of the water, but I love the way it's like that, but it's not helpful. I think it's not so much of a, maybe if they. That is, that is a cost savings. We are paying extra time in the morning and after school to provide.
And it was a little bit different when they went to Heights in a middle school. Um, because you had three kids that could get, like, it's English, but when they go to K R V.
And the other thing I was thinking of is, there are changes that would have to be made to each facility. They would definitely be able to be paid for with money from like sale of properties or.
Yes, because we know that those things are gonna be going to women, pregnant, so those capital monies could be used for those things. Without having to take it out of our face again.
I went to K R V, then Heights, then Housel and High School, right? So I, I feel like the multiple transitions kind of helped me be prepared for middle school and high school. Instead of like, if the first transition I had to do was from fifth to sixth grade, I don't think I would have done as well in those. Personally, like I would have been unprepared.
So super glad you shared that.
I would have the, you know, these building, um, first day of school. And there were certain third graders that. They were not staying. New school, not staying. I don't know if this same challenge happened when they went K two, but it was new. I mean, they were a little traumatized. Out of the anxiety. There's kids of all kinds of experiences.
And I think that it makes us, so going back to these next steps, family, we want to hear of those things, right? Um, you know, Ryan made the comment in context, oh, I know, it's when I was in school and I was getting chickens, so. But meaning, but meaning families have, but what I'm saying is families have many, many years of experiences, right? And so some families may say, my point is, you know, to talk to your family, they may have liked the style of building. Even though that's the way it's always meant in Prosser, we don't know anything. So, so what my point is that in the, in the teasing was like. Have to see about what is best. And the other thing is social, emotional anxiety for our young people is huge right now. And if we do one thing to lessen that. For a, for a advantage.
I think the foster is unique to the, because it's like, which we find are very great. I think that's not, I think that's like the exception in all of the.
It's it's obviously because sometimes when you go to the public center or you're in a meeting and you're doing, oh, okay, I like the way the school. It's like, okay, well, we have this kind of weird thing in elementary. We have K two and a three, five and five, we have a K. But then the kind of text for that, we're very, we'll make sure. It is, I think it is unique.
I think it's been a good step.
Yeah, uh, I. Here in the middle school, so I'm not familiar with the elementary setup. What I understand, we have a building that goes uh kindergarten to the second grade and another building that does third to. Oh, hold on. That's my old town. We had just uh two elementaries that did uh. Kindergarten to uh fourth grade. And with being in the building for so long, uh, students would get used to like the teachers in the layout of the building. While uh, if I were to grow up here, I think I would be very confused and nervous about going over to a new building with like. A new layout, new teachers, maybe new expectations while with just the. Regarding to um, this, you would be able to get used to and feel more natural as in the building.
Cell phone in school.
Well, there's, there's no attachments. I just think that we just need to talk about this. Hot, hot topic. Districts around Washington, the nation, whatever. Um, you have a cell phone policy, um, but I don't know. Think that cell phone policy is kind of dependent on the teacher. I'm looking at high schoolers here. Kind of dependent on the teacher, kind of dependent on the situation. Depending on parenting, the cell phone, right? So we've seen. I just did a cell phone policy. There's just different things. And I just would like to hear from the school board and. Um, you know, just talk about the cell phones. Would like to talk about some cell phones too. And if no other, talk to yourself. And it's, there's no underlying anything. I would like to talk about it for those who are listening. Really like to just get some input from the community about the cell phones in school.
Um, so I mean, I'm a student. I don't really use my phone in class. Especially if a teacher has a vibe where it's like, you're not using your phone. I'm not gonna get my phone. Um, that said, like, I don't feel like in most high schoolers, you would get their phone in class. But I don't think it, I think they've grown up like that. So it's not affecting them. Like maybe during like a school or another time where it was like you have them. I don't think it's affecting them like with their work.
The teachers that I usually interact with already have like an idea of how to deal with like problems in the classroom. Or like if they catch us to be like confusing everything they shouldn't be, they have like their own like. Little way of like just like taking the phone away. It's just keeping it until the end of class. Like we've already found a way to deal with it already.
But as you grow up, it's in your education that you're regulating yourself with your phone. So I think that's cool. There's a little problem right now. I know it's a problem for some sense. Yeah, I think it knows when like kids, they're supposed to teach them. So it's kind of like. Text everyone you can. I know I was one of those kids, but that's. Yeah.
There might be mine. I know there's one teacher in the middle school that's got the pocket with my back ball. So kids can make a big phone in the in the pockets. It seems to work good. Is there anybody? At the high school during that or is that a little of the okay?
Yeah, there's a couple teachers I usually, you know, often interact with in the classroom. They have like a similar thing where you. Hey, if the student does like use a different class, they put their phone in there or days just have like a tweet or that they just put their phone in until the end of.
Yes. As a student beyond being distracted into you personally, potentially, or you should be in class paying attention. I feel like there's a problem with. Phones being used to like to take pictures or videos documenting other people and sharing it on social media. Have a consented to that.
I personally haven't seen too much of that. There was, uh, I recently, yesterday in pursuit. I just see it as I have not that much on Snapchat, but it was posted on Snapchat. Um, but I haven't seen like too many things like that other than, um, my videos, which is. I try to say what people grew up with those, but I didn't have the phone until I was like fourteen, until my freshman year. So I didn't have the like. I didn't have middle school to like get it out of my system of being on my phone. And even then, like freshman year, I wasn't really using my phone that much. So. I guess it really just depends on the kid and it's kind of hard to like centralize or like identify. What kids aren't gonna have a problem with their phone use and what kids aren't. So it's kind of hard to target. Problem of phone usage.
One of my thoughts is, I mean, you guys are students. Like you're you're not wanna push yourself back and then like leave those just, there are many kids that aren't. And I don't know, but you know, parents really do have the responsibility of making sure that they're handling those things correctly. Um, and I guess in a piece of the D P. Are the rules being enforced that are already there in school? Um, I've been hearing from radio shows and stuff, the feedback they've been getting. Parents, it's pretty negative on this because they want to be able to get a hold of their kids if it was an emergency. But you're sure like to continue.
I've shared something similar with him. As a parent, right? I want my, neither of my children have a cell phone. If they don't, if they're in middle school and I don't think that they can really be trusted, to be honest, right? A lot of their friends have phones and I see that their friends are on their phones. And they shouldn't be all the time, right? Um, they have phone watches because it's important to me to be able to get a hold of my kids or they can protect. Right? So I think it's good that we have a policy that there is no phones in the classroom. You don't really belong there. And that policy being enforced shouldn't have a problem. And maybe there's problems where it's not being enforced.
Yes, and and so really this was for this purpose to start a discussion for people here. It's not about. You know, locking phones at this point. This is not about whatever. This is like hearing what our community and our staff and our students. Literally your voices, like if if we had no cell phones, would the cell phones have been not at the fight, right? You know what I'm saying? Like, and then sensationalizing something that shouldn't be sensationalized, right? Um, fighting so that you make the TikTok is not the reason to fight.
Concerning these, to be honest with you, it's like, who's getting shamed publicly? By other people because they have a phone and they're taking pictures or videos in a way that's going to embarrass another student. That's the thing that really makes me feel like.
The only other instance I actually saw like of what you're talking about, um, like being. Maybe because someone has a phone or something. So like my person here, I was, um, I was a very large, I was a fan case basically. And then I kind of got rid of that, but. Uh, we were playing like Uno or something at lunch and I saw someone snap that story and they were like. These like riddles or something like playing Uno at lunch and it was like. But I guess that could have been prevented if we hadn't had phones. But then. I think kids would want those phones at lunch anyway. Like I think there should be a rule where they would get their phone if we were to go like. No cell, no cell phone or like put it somewhere safe during day. I think kids would want to be able to like call their friend during lunch if they're having a date or something like that, you know?
Well, maybe it goes back to again, how policies around will lead. Actually fall into that category. So if we're following a policy and there's consequences being enforced. I think that's good enough.
I would sure be interested to hear like what. What programs are for. In the classroom because maybe the teacher is doing their job. Sure it's getting done. And yeah, I would, I would be interested to hear what the, but it may not, it may not mean that parents can't get a hold of their kids. So, you know, I, yeah, I would be very interested.
I think hopefully this, yeah, open up lines of discussion. I, I, I truly hope that you guys hear from that. And students as well, but yeah.
Yeah, my kids tell me most of the teachers have no phone policy in class. But when they're in the middle of instruction and their back turned, they're on their phones. They can't see, right? So they can't jump.
I think too part of this, like even though you, you guys, it depends on how you have an application like that. We have to get students not taking phones out during class. How many times did you have a buzz in your pocket during a day? And I know this is going to show on, on the screen, so I apologize for that, but there was a teacher right now. There's no students. And this is one class period. So kids are getting hundreds of notifications, hundreds of notifications during class, and that is distracting, even if you're trying to avoid them. If one off in your pocket, you were expecting that text from your mom, like it, it still is just attraction. So, um, they are a part of our world. So how do we manage them so that, that it, you know, so kids can learn?
I think the other piece, and I'm gonna, even though you were using it as an example. I think if more kids are late to know, you're acting face to face with, interacting face to face with one another. Versus social media, our kindnessness and a few things that we are foundationally struggling with. Um, it might improve for all of us.
That's kind of why like families, everybody in families are like so tight, tight knit because like we have to. Be together in times where we can't look at our phones. Like if we're paying attention to the game at the ball, you know. We're usually playing something like I played. Uh, the one card game with my other drum major because we have to pay attention and we can't really like be on our phones or anything else. Um, but. There's, I saw this on like Instagram or something, but there are districts in the U S that have done like. Phone bags where like on their couches. Yeah. I'm not saying you should do that, but. I'm saying it's something to think about for sure. Like going forward, maybe middle school would benefit from that.
There is definitely something. Different about how people interact with each other when they don't have the ability to get on cell phones. And it, it increases those connections and respect and relationships. And even giving kids their phones at lunch, right? You want to say, well, you're not in an educational setting. You should not be able to have your phone. But there's nothing better than walking up to a table of kids who are all on their phone and not talking to each other at lunch.
Or how about the time and and I'm in this age, that's where I'm sitting here right now and I text Diana. And I'm doing this about something else that's going on, but I don't want to hurt anyone that I'm talking to Diana, right? They see that all the time. You're sitting in a group, you'll eat at dinner tables, you see them whatever, and then somebody starts thinking, Lord. This person puts down their phone and that person's phone vibrates, right? I mean, wow, you have, I have thirty year old kids. I, that's how they communicate in the same room. And I don't know that that's what we want to be teaching. So I just want everybody to once again understand this is a discussion, not an action item, not taking any action. I'd really like to hear from anybody who is either listening or will listen. Or whatever, because we'd like to have some discussions about cell phone usage in schools.
What's the best way then to like? Maybe this discussion if someone has some feedback.
They can email Diana and I, they email you. Uh, you know what I mean? Like because they feel safer contacting you, but students would like to, who listens would like to email our board reps. They could email you so you could leave them anonymous, right? Um, I think there's just lots of ways, much like Alexander, he wanted to use his survey. And they wanted to comment about phone usage in school. I'm wondering if. Cell phones are cool, but I wonder if the students really could say it totally anonymously, they wish they weren't. If that makes sense. I mean, sometimes we do the norm because that's what we do. And sometimes maybe they would feel safer without the phone. Oh, without the phone, excuse me.
Heard the comment, there's some times where students might have a problem with having their phones at school when everyone's in the school. Our response was we have hundreds of phones in this school. Call them, make sure you chuckle the message, and if they need to call you, they can use them. Like we did.
I know. I'm gonna lose that one too, like some of us. I'm not gonna lose that one. There's this session, an ongoing discussion about cell phone usage in school. Action items. Number one, out of state travel request, National Science Teaching Association, and this P A conference in New Orleans. That is Mr.
I know it's been about this, so I can share it, but since we're not here. Um, here, um, had. Person of our science teachers and Mr. Thump to go to the National Science Conference. Um, in New Orleans, they are, um, thinking how, you know, new and innovative information and curriculum ideas. As we are working on our curriculum of auction. And so here was willing to put that, so they're asking permission to attend.
Can you discuss like what your is and we read about, I mean.
So in Europe, it's like a grant, um, and lots of, it's largest W S U Tri Cities. And the, um, original purpose was to help students gain early awareness. Of like college opportunities, educational opportunities. There will be really exposure, but you know, to college was one of their really. But in general, their, their purposes of supporting students to be successful and graduate from high school. So there's a, a grant through W S U, we are W S U Tri Cities, but there's other colleges, universities, and they support the schools with some. Scapping, they've been able to provide tutoring and other supports. And as well, those grants, it can be a little challenging because it's always identified to a grade or two grades. So you might have nine or ten graders in high school that can benefit from the tutoring services, but not only eleven, they're twelve graders. Uh, but in this case, because these science teachers teach both the grades, they're able to fund more for them to attend. Also in the past, been able to support purchases of technology like, um. If they can sign to that calculators that they might need for certain classes, not as much of a need now. We've had a grant. Pretty much for one year in the years in the district, and they usually start like in the sixth or seventh grade and follow those kids.
So grant money, not levy dollars, not be.
No, and it's all grant money and not grant money that actually, um, the district receives, it's all managed through W S U and Tri Cities.
There are motion to approve.
I'm going to approve out of state travel request, National Science Teaching Association Conference.
Second.
All in favor? Hi.
Right.
Number two, consultant service agreement with Craig Reynolds.
So Delise, um, had a family thing as we she emailed you. She was going, she was on for a while in our discussions a while and she did. Um, let you know that she's gonna ask that I present these to you. Um, the consultant service agreement, um, is with Craig Reynolds again. It's up to fifteen days. Um, it doesn't suit some expenses. Um, I don't know how to explain this other than. Someone with historical knowledge and expertise in the field. What is making the teaching and longevity of Delise and her position with us are very valuable. Um, think of it as a mentor. Because as a coach, so we are asking for fifteen days to be used throughout.
And it really isn't just supporting Delise. He's supporting Casey Winner, our new fiscal specialist. Extensively, matter of fact, a lot of his time is spent with Casey, helping her learn her new role.
I almost took a picture to bring to the board meeting tonight, but I didn't know if they would like it. At one point. It was Craig and Casey had their heads together, the screen like closer than we are probably. And Delise is standing over the top of them looking down and she has her pen pointing at the screen. Um, and it's that way intense for eight hours a day when he is there. They eat lunch together, they work through the lunch, you know what I mean? Like they're into it. Because the learning is so critical and some of these steps they only do once a year. So it's not like you get good at it because you've done it every month.
And Craig being who he is, it's, it's not like this is the only, just these days are when he helps us. He helps us out way outside of this amount of time.
Talk to him all the time. Any discussion or question?
Well, I see the estimated expense is six sixty. Is that just like for one day or is that? Or is that, because that's, you know, but the fee is, I mean, it's like we're giving them an allowance up to fifteen thousand.
So basically there's one for his professionalism and one's for forty-four dollars per day mileage reimbursement. So that's where that comes. One's the expenses and one's. It's a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour. It's his rate. And he don't, he is very, like Dan says, very gracious, but instead of coming to you with a. Twelve hundred dollar and next month they come to with another twelve hundred, we're asking for up to.
I would make a motion, a motion to approve the consultant service agreement with Craig Reynolds.
A second?
All second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Number three, E S D one oh five Info Service Center.
So, um, just like we have E S D agreements every year for all of the services that the E S D provides. This is our E S D agreement for all of our services covered through. Um, things that are not covered through special programs. So I'll give you an example. This is our work with fiscal. This is our work because they have to approve our monthly budgets and all those. This is our work with transportation. This is our work with Skyward. Oh, yes, Skyward and our student management. Anything that is not specific to a categorical program. And this is our, and you've done. And this is our, and you've done these each other.
Question? All in, all in favor, or sorry, is there a motion? Getting there. Um, I'll move to approve E S D one oh five info service center. Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Number four, M O U E S D one two three Candy Mountain Academy.
I believe Nikki's on. Are you on Nikki?
I am, but the mic's really fuzzy tonight, but I don't know if you can hear me.
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. So this is the Candy Mountain Academy contract um, for a student that we're sending there for behavior supports. Do you have questions for me?
Candy Mountain is a behavioral academy.
It's it's through the E S D one twenty-three in Pasco.
Is this a student that we've had in in the district and just were not able to serve?
Yes, so this is a a student that was in the S S A program last year. And um, we tried to um, transition them back to their homeschool, which was Witstrand, and we don't have the appropriate behavior supports in our districts to support her needs, so she's attending attending Candy Mountain Academy.
And is the hope that the student would return during the school year back to Witstrand or?
Well, yes, so every, it's all individualized and they do a lot of progress monitoring with kids and they're really impressive thing. Um, they're under new um, director um, this year with all new staff. And so when we, parents and I met with them over there, uh, they talked extensively about how they support her in the classroom setting, what her day would look like, and um, what I appreciated was they also discussed how they transitioned her back to school. Um, they were uh, sharing with us that they had a student that they took three months to transition back to school. Um, which meant that uh, support person that they had connected with from Candy Mountain went to school in their homeschool with them and transitioned them back until they could be successful in the setting, because it is a small, a small classroom setting, and so it it's it's a different um, atmosphere than school.
Um, I was just, are we obligated to to do this for the student? Or is this?
I don't know how to answer the word obligated. It is, no, no, this would be um, a situation where we are unable to support the student with the needs that they have, with the skills and staffing that we have. And they have unique needs, and this would be a resource that we would provide. Based on their I E P and their individual needs, we are required to help support them and make growth goals and models, and this is the supports that the I E P team and the district feels is necessary to help support the student.
Is that on a monthly, is it billed on a monthly basis?
It's a yearly contract, but at any time that this transitions, those services would be provided appropriately.
This is a quite, quite a bit higher than all study, possibly the student.
Yeah, so it is, I can, I can file safety net on this student also that does not by any means get to the total cost of that, that, but we could um, get in the high sixty percent of our um, expenditures back through safety net on this.
Nope, no, uh, go ahead. No, go ahead.
Did somebody have a question? I will say um, we ha- we do have um, several students that have substantial behavior needs that are on I E Ps and uh, we do not have the programming to support their needs, so we're well aware that we need to look at expanding what we offer. We just have to be in compliance with um, supporting their needs at the moment. And there are not a lot of behavior options in the valley.
Your motion? Uh, I'll move to approve the M O U E S D one twenty-three Candy Mountain Academy. All second that. All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Number five, Princess Theater Fall twenty twenty-four, the Lion King Kids.
It's pretty self-explanatory, explanatory. Kevin's here, if we have questions, Diana and I, we've all been a part of this. This is our continuing ongoing, so I was gonna say support, but our ongoing partnership with Princess Theater and growing the arts programs in our school system. Um, this is our portion of the cost of doing this work offsite.
I would make a motion to approve the Princess Theater Fall twenty twenty-four, the Lion King Kids.
There a second? All second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. I can't wait to see it. I'm excited.
So our, our first one was last spring, um, so this will be our second one.
Are you on?
It's great.
Audience has had a hard time online with my microphone and that microphone.
Okay, so this is the second time around. Um, but something that's that's really unique about it is the set, the sets all created for them and the costumes, so they they get real costumes for the kids to perform. Uh, that's pretty, pretty neat. And last year we did first graders, we adjusted that to third grade this year. Uh, I think that was a good move, and we only have two kids that are not participating compared to last year we had upwards to ten, so.
And did you get to pick, or you just lucked out that it's the Lion King Kids for the Witstrand Lions?
It was what was available.
Okay.
Well, break a leg. Number six, superintendent annual goals and objectives.
This is just now for your vote, we've talked about it multiple times, so it's just here for your approval.
I'll move to approve the superintendent annual goals and objectives.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, aye. Motion carries. Number seven, behavior support for special education students.
This is me again. Um, so that was a little bit of a segue to that intentionally on the Candy Mountain. So this is uh, the retract, redacted, uh, retracted contract from the last meeting that had several errors in it. Um, it had a total of two hundred thousand um, for this service, and then, and as you can see, it's nowhere near that. Uh, but that being, so there are different tiers in supporting behaviors. And she is a tier two behavior support, she's an A B A specialist, so she'll come in and model for the teacher in the classroom, the pair of educators, she'll work hand up, hand to hand with the uh, students in need, and there are several students that she's going to be working with during this window of time. Um, I'm optimistic in the difference that uh, she will be able to make um, by spending um, four days, she, the only day she won't be coming is Wednesdays for the first two weeks. And then the third, at the end of the second week, we will meet and revisit, uh, look at her data tracking and so forth and have a team discussion about where she's at with all the kid, they all have varying needs and they're at all three of the elementary schools. And um, then if she needs to do four days a week, that third week, there, the contract is more um, hours instead of how many days a week, so she has that flexibility to meet the kids' needs. So.
Do we have anyone qualified in our district to do this?
We had, three of us got A B A trained last year, um, and uh, we are working to develop a tier two behavior support program, but we do not have that ready yet.
And this is solely to focus on A B A training?
Correct. Um, this is um, to, to work on A B A strategies um, with the students and to teach them to the staff, which is a, it's a, it's a big deal. Uh, it's a lot to learn and um, a lot of the, two, well, not a lot of them, two of the families of the kids that we're serving had, these kids have already done the A B A therapy, one in Richland and one in Yakima. So this will be a continuation of the therapies um, that they had received and it's um, I, you know, it, it's always a good thing when we have the continuity between what they're doing with outside supports and follow through with that in, at the school setting as well, so that will help with um, the, that.
The, there also is, um, although we've begun training, our, we have two teachers and and Nikki herself who are trained. It's, it's the beginning, the people that were have, asking to come and work with these students and and we're learning and trying to build our knowledge so we can have our own adaptive behavior specialists in the district. But we are not at the level of experience of the, the people that we're bringing in to work with the kids yet. We're trying to get there because we know we have kids that have significant needs in supporting their behaviors so they can be successful at school, but we are still learning in our, for our own staff.
And, and um, just to see, me and the other two teachers ha- had, do have scheduled ongoing A B A refresher courses from the one that we offered before school started, so we're trying to double dip and give the teacher support as often uh, as we can to make sure that um, everybody's feeling supported.
This is a may, not will, may be another place where we can apply for safety net dollars as well.
Sure, well, that's good that you said that, because I just was at a I E P meeting um, at a Witstrand the other day, and the case manager did, I did have her put it in the matrix, so that allows me to, in the, that's on, that's the service areas on the I E P. So that allows me to use the hours that Katie would be serving that student to file safety net.
Any other question?
So this isn't a long-term commitment?
And also the, also the teachers that have been trained, also, they have full classrooms, so they're teaching full-time as well. And, and until they get that full training and some kind of transition plan with that, that it's hard for them to be able to provide uh, those additional supports while they're also, while that, while they have a classroom going in their, in their rooms.
Well, I would make a motion to approve behavior support for special education students.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Number eight, vouchers and payroll. Any questions regarding vouchers and payroll? There are.
I just had one question on um, and this is just probably my own lack of understanding, but um, we're paying for the food that's being sold at the, for the concessions. That money is going, but we're getting that money, it's coming back to.
It's through A S B.
Okay.
So the Club X goes down, buys the Reese's cup, and then sells the Reese's cup to the, to make a profit.
Um, I'll move to approve vouchers and payroll. Is there a second?
I'd second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Motion carries. Consent items.
I would make a motion to approve the consent items.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Consent items are approved. H, reports. Are we gonna?
I've excused Delise from this evening.
Thank you, Diana.
So I did miss the last meeting because I was in, I would say I was sorry, but I'm not, because I was spending time with my new granddaughter. But, so I feel like I'm not sure if I'm giving you all the updates, because it's been four weeks, not two weeks. Um, I, we are still working on grants, uh, fin- getting those finalized, some are, are still coming out and not quite due uh, yet. Um, but I do just want to make you aware, so uh, Title One's a big grant that we get, we, we've gotten, and in my eleven years in this position, it's been sometimes over a million dollars, um, or close to that nine hundred thousand, nine hundred fifty thousand, it's down in the sevens now. Um, they use a formula to give us funding, of course, you know, our student count is part of that. But part of the fo- formula for the funding comes from the census and the poverty rate in Prosser based on the census. Um, we've, we used to be above fifteen percent poverty in Prosser, which if you think about it, you're like fifteen percent, that sounds really too low, especially when our student pre-introduced lunch population is between seventy-five and eighty-two percent. Um, but this is the community poverty rate based on the census. And um, it dropped below fifteen percent two years ago. So we've had, we've had a reduction of a hundred fifty thousand dollars two years ago, this year we have a reduction of about a hundred forty thousand dollars, and we'll probably have another reduction. So we are having to cut back in Title One and reduce, even though I'm like, our student population need is, is great or greater than it's ever been. And our student um, poverty rate is higher than it's ever been, but that didn't, doesn't matter at this point when it comes to their formula. Um, and it's a federal government formula, by the way. Um, so just to let you know, as, as that reduces, that's the place where you know, like, we might have had reading intervention or math intervention or something like that, and we're going to have to reduce some of those services because we, we just don't have the funding and staffing and benefit costs continue to rise, so we just have to do we just have less, and we have to figure out how to work with that. Um, Kim's gonna talk a little bit about um, maybe some other funding implications that have to do with our district, but I just want you to be aware of that. Um, I will have the M T S S, the Multi-Tierred System of Support, just a little information update session at the next board meeting. I also plan to have the strategic plan updates, that could take a little bit longer, I don't know if you want me to split those into two board meetings, or if you want them at the same one, that's, you know, you don't have to decide that now, that can be a conversation, but as you're planning for the board meeting, the strategic plan could just be longer. M T S S is probably gonna take ten minutes, it's a short slideshow presentation, kind of tell you where we are, what M T S S is and what we're working on. But the strategic plan update might be longer, so just some.
Find a minute half, and then what else is on?
Keep in mind, and that's it, you know, and I am November, by then we're talking November, but it's, I mean, the work's going on, whether we give you an update or now or in another couple of weeks. Um, I just recently had my university, uh, my W S U Advisory Board meeting for the College of Ed at W S U Tri-Cities. And I, I joined that, they invited me to that board about probably eight years ago, and we were really in a, a pretty big crisis as far as teacher applicants and qualified people coming into the field. And they really did um, listen and they really worked hard, and so have a lot of our other area colleges and adding ed, ed programs like um, Columbia Basin College, we're getting so many inquiries, a lot of different colleges we haven't had before asking for either um, internships or student teaching placements, um, we have our first Arizona State student um, this year, uh, finishing her student, will be finishing up her student teaching this year. So uh, they listened to us, so that time that I've had to commit to that has been worth it, they really have listened to us. W S U really is working hard to help, you know, support teaching, uh, teaching needs and shortages, so I think um, sometimes it feels like some of those meetings aren't really worth it, but it has been worth it. And then I, Michael Denny probably hasn't got to do a middle school report unless he talked two weeks ago, did he talk about Camp Dudley? Awesome, okay, so we'll be going again in the spring, we're trying two individual days, and then we'll decide if we want to go to an overnight thing in the future. And that's all being funded by the Association of Washington School Principals, a grant through them, so. Alrighty, that's it for me.
Any questions?
Superintendent's report. Um, I'll just be quick, I try to give it to you in a written form. Um, some things are going on, we have Touch a Truck this weekend, um, we have um, signed up for the Prosser Downtown Trick or Treat, so that'll be fun at the end of the month. I attended volleyball last night, it was a nice win. For some of you who saw me, may have seen me there, I take my mom as often as I can. But she didn't make it very long, but we, we did some, a mom, mother-daughter outing, so it was great. Um, I was teasing Cammy before the meeting started, I'll either be at soccer Thursday night or maybe on Saturday in Ellensburg with my grandson. So it's still important that I get out to see all the teams. If I do Thursday with you, I might make it to swimming on Saturday, so we'll kind of see how it goes. Um, communication, I think it's important that we all.
Um communication, I think it's important that we all work really hard to support the Princess Theater. Um you saw the contract tonight and tickets are going on sale, would really great to see that, um let our community know how much we appreciate the partnership. Um the neighborhood schools um discussion was tonight, we will be having a discussion item about late start Wednesdays coming up. So um when the things come out, we li- we really do want it to be a discussion so we can share with you where we're at. I'm happy to report, we um have no outstanding legal issues. Um the facilities, um there is some work still going on in the smell at K R V, I'm happy to report it's out of the building in the respect that we're able to vent the air out of the building, we discussed it at our safety meeting tonight. Um but we do have a meeting with the city um and Fowler Construction, Andy, the director of maintenance, and I to see what the next steps are to see if we can find the source of the problem. Um Andy reported on the tennis courts, I just hope you know that if you drive up there and take a look, it's pretty impressive. Yes, you won't really get the real effect until you see the cutlery on the tennis court, but to see this great big tennis court now behind chain link, it's pretty cool. Uh the old tennis courts are still um just in the, in the works. Art Fiker access, that concrete going in, I don't know if you've been, been, been involved in concrete pouring, but stairs are, and if you see how big that stair project is going up the hill, that's a big deal. Um and then the OPHS here, leadership, um I am, you guys know I like to talk. Um so I po- volunteered to be um the superintendent that will be center stage at this month's um superintendent meeting in ESD one twenty-three. And we're refocusing our problem of practice. And I'm going to bring back the data because the problem is practice is going to be our K five neighborhood schools discussion. So it'll be interesting to see what other superintendents in my seat would do and how they would handle that moving forward. So I thought that was a good way to bring that forward, to be able to share that data. Um we're s- doing our meet and confer with our unions and I do want to make sure everybody understands that this year we'll be negotiating with the P S E, the coaches and the principals unions in twenty twenty-five, so we'll have those three to can work with through. Um I'm happy to say our F T E was up ten in October, um that's a big deal for our district. However, I want to put everybody who's listening or everybody listens back on a reality check. Now, when I say we're graduating two hundred and fifty, that's something to be very, very proud of, that's a great thing. I mean, I don't know if it's two forty-seven or two fifty-three, I'm not quoting an exact number at this point of the game. But I want everybody to understand our kindergarten class came in was one seventy. That's eighty student enrollment less of what you're graduating versus what you're bringing in. And if we are happy and excited that our gra- kindergarten class next year is one eighty, right, who's coming in, we graduated two fifty, that deficit is still going to affect our overall budget. Now, what does that mean to us? I don't know the exact answers, but when we're talking about staffing, and we're talking about changing intervention programs, we're talking about lost Title One funds, all of those things has to be in everybody's forefront, so I don't want someone to say to me, um I love to talk about it in the grocery store, but I'm just saying, I don't want you to say you never told us until you told us. So I'm starting this conversation very early and open with the public. We are one of the few districts, and Deanna and I go to a lot of meetings, where our kindergarten class this year is bigger than our kindergarten class last year. One of the very few.
And one of the very few where our enrollment ended up well above what we projected. Most districts are projected to drop and maybe have even dropped more.
And so I'm not saying that this is catastrophic at this point, but when we start working on budget for next year, those things have to be consideration and everybody in the public, everybody in the community. I want you to know that I started talking about this in October, I didn't start talking about it when we started talking budget in May.
Thing I would add to is um our enrollment is uh higher than what we projected. But no matter what happens, um just because we are still doing, like, we're doing okay financially. And but when, when your enrollment is less, there are cuts. It's not because you aren't doing a good job, but there's less kids, there's less money. And um and there's other things that happen like the Title One thing, you know, so changes, uh change comes. And sometimes people are like, you said you weren't gonna cut, we didn't cut, we reduced. You know, there's still gonna be reductions that have to happen to get to the point where our budget, where we can be physically sound, so just be prepared.
Any questions?
Oh, I also have to say, I got Deanna's goals, so we got that dipped.
Well, thanks, everybody, our next meeting will be October twenty-third here in our regular board meeting room. Oh my gosh, I'm gonna get fired from my vice president position, board report. Okay. Well, thank you. You're gonna, you're gonna give the best report ever, would you like to start, Brian?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I think we should start with you.
Um I, yeah, not a whole lot, um I, sounds and looks of homecoming week were seem very good, hopefully you guys had a good week. Um I, I want to say thanks to the Prostert Booster Club for the fireworks show Friday night. Um that was, that was pretty amazing for a post-game fireworks show. Obviously, conferences going on this week, so hopefully uh attendance is really good with students and parents. And as Kami mentioned, big senior night for soccer girls tomorrow, so not support and swimmers will.
Thank you, Michelle.
Uh yeah, I knocked my conferences out first thing last night and they went really well, so um it's nice to see how smooth it was going in there. I also attended the N H S breakfast, the balloon rally morning, thanks to, she's um tickets that she sold me and I saw Alexander there. And everyone loved the whipped cream, how it was very fresh. Um and then finally, anyone who's ever been frustrated trying to find the lunch menu online, me. Um Kim, thank you so much for working through that so quickly for me. Um now, go to the district website and it is just right where you would think it would be. So if you ever want to print the lunch menu for the month, you should be able to find it now.
Our nurses advocated for the interactive lunch menu, so there is the part in the lunch menu, it has nutrition information. And it's really important for our diabetic students so they can do their carb counting for their insulin. Um but if parents want to know the nutritional information, that inter menu is interactive, you can go in and look and see what the um what the nutritional information is for all the items we're serving. So Darlene and her staff work on that, really, get that in there.
Um yeah, I was just gonna give kudos to Andy, I I missed, I didn't get a chance, but you know, some of the s- the improvements even you see right out here, this, there's just some awesome things happening, I haven't gotten to see everything, but uh I, there, there has been, I've, it's noticeable. And just, I guess um I didn't, I just wanted to give him kudos for that. And um also, I agree with Brian that the fireworks thing was awesome, the whole, the whole Friday night thing. And you know, I'm, even the week leading up to it, sounds like it was awesome, but it would, you just felt a real sense of community, you know, uh with that, at that game. I wish we had more home games.
All, all this echo everybody else, homecoming was a lot of fun, even not in high school, but the M, the Booster Club, putting the M up on the hill, the um fireworks, spectacular. I really enjoy the new rendition of the fight song that the band is doing, I think you guys played it, I don't know how many times you guys played it last Friday, but it was a lot of times.
Yeah, we have to play every touchdown and I have to get up, sorry, that, I didn't mean to add a emphasis like that. But I have to jump up there and you just have to be ready. And one time, like, I almost tripped into the foreign exchange student who was standing right there and I felt so bad, like I scared her, but it's fun, yeah.
It was great, it was a lot of fun, um they end up in the National Honor Society process, it's a paper in our house. Thanks, thanks, everybody, and thanks um to people that I have spoke to with, that had, so, that came with solutions and wanting to help and not just laundry list of companies. We're all trying to work towards solutions, so thank you. And next meeting will be what I said before, but I'm gonna remind myself, October twenty-third here at six P M, the meeting's adjourned.